Okay, we are live. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and we'll have a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no consent agenda, but we still have to have a motion to approve the agenda, don't we?
Yes, that's one thing in consent agenda is the agenda approval.
So moved.
Motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Musgrave.
Yes.
Weinrunner.
Yes.
Delaney.
Yes.
Kinnaman.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Hurkin.
Yep.
McKenney.
Yes. The agenda is approved. Did we have a roll call? Did we have a roll call? We didn't.
We did not. Would you like a roll call?
We probably should do a roll call. Roll call is bigger.
Delaney.
Yeah, here.
Hurkin.
Here.
Musgrave.
Here.
Weinrunner.
Here.
Kinnaman.
Here.
Howard.
Here.
McKenney.
Here. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public can adjust counsel once recognized by the chairperson. Comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for items not on the agenda. Counsel may extend this time up to an additional four minutes by a majority vote. For items on the agenda, comments may be made after council discussion prior to council vote. Prior to addressing counsel, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. The only item on tonight's agenda, this special meeting agenda, is the consideration of the approval of Resolution 2022-025 amending the election date for the police-fire-public-safety operations special assessment ballot question. So we will entertain public comment about any other items. Yes, Mr. Clark.
Jim Clark, 314 Hadley Street. I have no intention of speaking directly to the resolution, but there are two related issues I want to speak to. One was when I picked up my F and T ballot two weeks ago and saw budget proposal on there, I was kind of surprised. I mentioned it to a few people. And then I found out there was a problem. I'm a firm believer in facts and issues. I contacted the township clerk, and Sherilyn contacted the county clerk. And I found out this stuff, in fact, I got copies of it, that Deborah Bigger, it was April 20th of this year, corresponded with the county, and asked to have the proposal put on the ballot for November. Somehow, the county made what I consider a pretty substantial error and put it on the ballot for next week. They generally have kind of a fail-safe procedure for things on the ballot. If you've got a vested interest in the ballot, at least our experience has been, the county would send you a copy of the ballot well in advance, and you would verify that the spelling of your name was correct and all the information pertaining to you was correct. I assume they did that in this case. If they sent it to the township instead of to the clerk of the village, that would be a second error made by the county. But anyway, that brings us to today. I like to look at the bigger picture on things. I've been in Holly since the late 80s. In that time, I have noticed many times that Holly is pretty fierce of being independent, having their own services, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, I think most of the time, that's worked very well for the village. When we start looking at particularly police services, I look at the bigger picture and I get confused. You know, Holly spends something in the neighborhood in the current budget, I think, of $1.6 million for police services. Holly Township spends nothing. Rose Township spends nothing. Groveland Township spends nothing. Now Springfield Township contracts with Oakland County, and Springfield has a population of two, two-and-a-half times the village. Their land mass is more than 14 times that of the village. And their expense for contracting with the sheriff's department is a couple hundred thousand dollars a year more than what the village spends for our two-and-a-half square miles. You know, there are a number of ways to go in the state of Michigan, which are all certainly legal. You can establish your own police force. You can maybe contract with the county. Or you can do the default, which is rely on the state police whenever they get around to looking into your issues. We have always had a police department. And certainly, we all know that inflation is eating up our resources these days. And I think it's fair to say that if Holly stays on its current course, that the advice of the attorney or the auditors or whatever is probably accurate, that Holly is gonna run out of money, since the vast majority of the general fund goes to the police department.
Can I get my four minutes if I need some?
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Love?
John Love, 200 North Saginaw. I've been working on my street. Nobody sweeps the streets anymore. And I work to beautify the street. That was the number-one complaint that people had about the village, that they wanted to have addressed. They wanted the street scape improved. Instead, of course, we got the bike lane. So we need to do something to address beautification. And you're saying we need more money for everything. The other thing is this situation with water. The water cost is out of sight. Drives people out of the town. And/or they get their water bill put on the taxes. And if you own the house, the owner of the house pays the bill. There's a... The thing is, is out of control. There's no... It's not based on use. As a consequence, it's a tax. And the village spent a quarter of a million dollars on attorney fees to prevent that tax, to keep that tax in place. So in other words, if you're swimming, you have a swimming pool, and you pay the same tax or fixed charge as somebody that's a widow or an orphan's that has limited use, that's unfair. But we don't care about that. And the crime problem, I don't know what's taking place. I'm gonna be with the chief here tomorrow. Talk about life in the city. The... And the way you spend money. You spent $40,000 on the waterworks. Tore the place down. And it looks beautiful now with an iron gate around the building there. And I was working with Hoffman to fix it up for nothing. Then you would have had rest facilities, restrooms, and other opportunities. But I've spent quite a bit of time and money trying to preserve properties here. The mill, that was gonna be torn down. And it would have cost more than 40 to tower that place down the way it's built. The gray lady, managed to save that with cooperation at some point on that. But we need to stop wasting money on stupid stuff. And do start spending on things that make a difference. And we're gonna talk about more money. But I don't know what the crime problem is here in Holly that we need to deal with. But the worst thing I have to worry about is people throwing their cigarette butts on the sidewalk.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Reagan Rockwell, 836 Holly Bush Drive. I'm only gonna speak because Mr. Love brought up a really important point. If you're gonna have bike lanes, please keep them clean. My husband and I probably use the bike lanes more than anyone else in this village. And I hear all the time that they're useless from people. They're dirty as all get out. So if something happens when I have to put on my brakes, I have clipless pedals, 'cause I have a mountain bike. I'm gonna go flying and I'm gonna spill all over the road. And I'm gonna probably cause a big accident for everybody to clean up. It's a tragedy. If you guys are going to bring things in to beautify our city, our village, please, please maintain it. Please don't bring things in and not maintain it. Some of us on Bush Lake call the big... I know it was grant-funded. We were going to have an ice rink with ice skating, but I understand that it wasn't done correctly. They call it Taj Mahal, because it really is just kind of an eyesore. And nothing was done for kids in regards to Taj Mahal. We just get to look at it, and now it echoes sound all across the lake. In regards to that, when Chief Story was here, the park was locked up at night. Some time, I don't know where this happened. I talked to Mr. Walker about it. I probably mentioned it to Chief Narsh. But it would be nice to see that park locked up again. I see people, I see drunk deals happening in the park. I'm calling 911 at night, because people are over there at night. Because I don't want kids, as a caseworker for Holly Area Youth Assistance, I don't want kids drowning in the lake. I see the kids that come through Holly that are drinking or having sex in the park. So I wanna see it closed down at night, because then it relieves you guys from liability if something happens down there. That's my biggest concern. I'm gonna see a kid drowned in that lake at night or somebody who's drunk. And I just say, go ahead and do, do what you guys can to keep it safer. Keep it nice for the residents on Bush Lake, because we had a special assessment, as many of you guys know, for 10 years. We paid extra money because of the whole weir that went on. So that was an extra about $300 that we paid a year. So what is being done to take care of the residents? Because the roads around there, and extra traffic come in to use the park. So Rosette could be redone. It would be so nice to see Rosette be done. If that's an area where the public park is going to be used, please just maintain it. This is a beautiful place. We have beautiful public resources. I would love to see this be pleased appropriately. And the pride that goes into this beautiful place to keep it up, because we do have beautiful natural resources. But I am concerned with rentals in the community, because we see sometimes just different stuff that happen with atrocious amount of rentals. And we've gotta get back to, I think, property owners and making it an affordable place to live. And that includes reasonable water rates, making decisions that are best for people in Holly. I don't know what happens with a developer coming in and not having them pay tap-in fees upfront. We've got to do what's right for our future generation, so that we are not more extended than we already are. And then, as a caseworker for Holly Area Youth Assistance, I know that the Village of Holly is not funding us, is not sponsoring us. I'm a caseworker in two communities, and I am actually servicing more kids than full-time workers in one community. I just ran the numbers, because we're going through some changes at Youth Assistance. And we have Madison Heights, which only has about 1,000, just over 1,000 kids in their district. And they have about 700 economically disadvantaged students. Here in Holly, what we have, about 3,200 students in our district. And I ran the numbers there. We had about 1,400 economically disadvantaged students. In Brandon, we have about 2,200 students and 700, just a little bit over 700 economically disadvantaged students. You put them together, and it creates way more, five times as much as Madison Heights. So we need the help at Holly Area Youth Assistance. And it helps if you guys can speak up to the Board of Commissioners, because they are advocates for us if you stay out of the city, if you stay out.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Yes?
Good evening. Joanna Barnes, 3393 Harrington Drive. I wasn't actually gonna speak, but there's one thing that I wanna talk about. You know, a lot of the village people complain about the water and where money's being spent and what the village council is doing and how things are being run in government. And I think a huge part of that has to do with communication and transparency. People don't know where to go to get information consistently from the council other than to come to a council meeting or to sit through the council meetings, which are, let's face it, most of the time boring, you know? And they, it's just overwhelming for people. They don't understand the information. They don't understand what's happening. They don't understand the history behind it. They don't have time to research it. People are just trying to put food on the table and put gas in their tanks. So I don't know what the solution is. I know we have a holly.org site. There's been some issues that I personally have found with that that I brought to council members personally about that have been concerning, that it's clearly not being updated in a way that is beneficial to the community. And there's no communication for us to be able to find out literally what people are hap... what's happening unless we go to these individual council members and say, "What are your thoughts on this? What are you thinking about that? What's happening with this?" We don't have a village newsletter that goes out. We just don't have a way to be able to engage citizens enough. And that leads to a lot of confusion. And then when things like this happen with this ballot, it leads to more confusion. And it makes people think, especially then you hear like Silverman being involved with the township deal and the same kind of things happen with that. All of this starts to look like either the council here doesn't know what they're doing or you guys are doing it on purpose. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that's how it starts to look to people, that either you're not informing us on purpose or there's those mistakes happening all over, because somebody doesn't know what they're doing. I've come here enough to, and interacted with you guys enough in person, to know what's happening. You guys know what you're doing. But I come to the meetings. Most people don't. They just... Yeah, and part of that too, I guarantee you, most people will tell you they didn't know. Because how were they informed? And then the agenda's never put out. There is no communication and transparency in this community. And unless we, the citizens, seek it out ourselves. So, and it feels like you're, you know, minding for like rare precious metals in this community. So, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate everything that you guys do, 'cause I know you work hard. I know you guys get a lot of crap for what you do. But, you know, people just wanna know what's going on and where their tax dollars are going. And they don't, they wanna feel like they're not being wasted. And a lot of us are including our water bill as part of our mortgage payment now. That sucks. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I mean, I'm gonna tell you now. I'm here.
You're here.
Let's do this.
We said anyone else, so the invitation was open.
You gotta take up your Wednesday night. Let's do it.
Kristin Watt, 102 South First Street, apartment 3. I just wanted to make a little comment. I had the pleasure of meeting with Chief McGee, Chief Narsh, Mr. McKenney, or Captain McKenney, let's keep it formal, and Mr. Walker last Monday at the fire station to talk about this village. And I just, and I appreciate you guys including me in that conversation. And I have long supported privately and publicly Chief Narsh and Chief McGee and their respective departments. I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't own a home here. I rent. So I don't have to carry the burden of the increased taxes that a lot of my fellow homeowners in the community do. So it's easy for me to say I support the village and I support these services. I don't do it because, hey, someone else is paying for it for me. It's because I actually support the leadership within those departments. And I enjoy, I personally, and I only speak for myself, because not everyone that's in my circles agrees. We are not on the same page about everything, believe it or not. I enjoy having a personal relationship with these departments. I think it reduces incidence of police brutality. I believe it reduces incidence of discrimination by having a local department that actually knows its citizens. And I compare it almost to a small business versus a big box store. And no offense to Michigan State Police or Oakland County Sheriff's Department. They don't know you. You're just a number. And so it's a really hard place to be in, because normally, I want... I don't want people's taxes to have to go up. Everyone is seriously hurting right now, myself included, as an individual and a small business owner. So I personally support this village, but that's not what this meeting is about. That's gonna be for the people to decide on the ballot. But as a separate issue, I do have serious concerns while still being able to support these departments at this level of error that has happened. Not because I think anyone in any department in the county or in this village or township did this maliciously in any way. Sometimes we're just all overextended and we drop the ball. And I'd like to see some responsibility taken for that. We are human beings. We all make errors. Things happen. And I think what Joanna just said is something that we've talked about for a long time here when we come up and talk in public comment, which is, I know all you guys for the most part. I don't know your whole life stories, but I know you enough to know, if I ask you a question, you're gonna give me an answer. There's tons of people in this community that don't know who you are. They don't know your names. They don't even know what this is. They don't, they've never been to a meeting. They know nothing. And the perception in the community, whether you try to cover it, not cover it, explain it away or not, is that because of some of the constant lack of communication, it gives people the illusion that they do not trust you. They do not trust the county. They don't trust the staff. They don't trust the council. They don't trust anybody. Don't trust government. And I would really love to see Holly change that. I really would. Because this should never, this can be corrected hopefully legally, but this should, there should be a strategic planning meeting to figure out how this happened and make sure it never happens again. Because we already have people in the country who don't trust any of the elections as it is. We don't need Holly getting that tarnish on it as well. So that's all I have to say. I do thank you all for your time. And of course, it wouldn't be a council meeting if I didn't give a public comment. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, Sherilyn.
Mine's about the resolution.
Beg your pardon?
Mine's about the resolution.
Well, we're gonna have public comment about that, so we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to the agenda. There is no old business, new business. Consideration of the approval of Resolution 2022-025 amending the election date for the police-fire-public-safety operations special assessment ballot question. Mr. Walker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and Counsel. You have before you a council action request regarding approval of Resolution 2022-025 amending the election date. And so I will talk about this memo as well as the attachments that are under this memo, and then come back to my recommendation, if that's all right with Counsel. So on February the 8th of 2022, Counsel did approve Resolution 2022-007 authorizing a police-fire-public-safety operations special assessment ballot proposal to be placed on the November 2022 general election. And so there was a lot of rationale behind that request. If you recall, at the time, we had consultation and some comment from Pam Hill, who is our lead consultant and partner from Plant Moran, that talked about some of that rationale and reasons why this should occur from an outside auditing perspective. And then you had additional facts that were presented by myself. So after the February 8th meeting, Counsel did approve the ballot proposal to go on November. In April of 2022, and I sound like I'm repeating Mr. Clark, but he was 100% accurate when he was talking about that, the clerk did send an email along with a copy of the ballot to Oakland County and to Holly Township. Because we do not conduct our own elections. Our elections are conducted by the township. And so just to cover all the bases, they were sent to both places. And so we were moving along in our schedule of promoting or laying out a schedule of when the promotion of the November ballot would occur. And we didn't wanna do it six months early. And so we just had that meeting, as Mrs. Watt said, last Monday. And so we talked about it, and we actually had started to lay out a schedule and a platform for an education program for the public. And so on Thursday, we were notified that somebody had received or had inspected a absentee ballot and in fact, had found that the Village of Holly proposal for that public safety special operations village or special assessment was placed on the August ballot. So we didn't request it, and some of the documentation that is included and that I talked to you about shows just that. So we received that notification on Friday. Clerk Treasurer Bigger spoke with Oakland County Elections by telephone, and they said that they in fact did place it on the ballot in error. Now, puts us in a very precarious situation. That was not our plan. We did not want it in the August ballot for a couple of reasons. But it certainly took away any opportunity for us to properly educate and lay out all the facts for this type of ballot proposal. The problem, of course, is, as Mr. Clark said, he got his ballot, as I'm sure several hundred other people did, with it already on there. And so people had already received their ballot, had already voted in all likelihood, and returned the ballots to the township so that they would be included in the counting of the ballots on August 2nd. And so the ballots are out there. So the question is then, where do we go from there? Well, in my opinion, the only place that we go is, it has to continue on the August 2nd ballot. And that's because people already have them out there. So it's not something we planned. It's not something that we particularly wanted. But it is the fact that they're out there. The ballot is there. And so in order to have that happen, the county has requested that the council pass another resolution authorizing the ballot on the August 2nd election. Now you say, what would happen if you didn't authorize it? If you didn't authorize it, then it would leave it open for challenge if the proposal passes and would create additional expense for the village and confusion. And I think those that voted for the proposal would be as unhappy as those who voted knowing the proposal and it passed. And so, you know, in my mind, the correct action is to go forward. The next page under the council action request is actually Resolution 2022-025. And the third whereas just simply states Oakland County has placed the language on the August 2nd, 2022 primary election, and then the fourth one. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Holly Council hereby approves the public, or the police-fire-public-safety operations special assessment ballot question be placed on the August 2nd, 2022 election ballot. If you turn then to page four, you'll have a brief explanation that the village office put out for the public, just basically explaining what happened, where the funds would go, and some of the rationale behind it, and how much it would cost. And so that's just a real brief explanation. The next page behind that is the original Resolution 2022-007. And that shows the date of when our request was that this be placed, and that would be on the November 8th, 2022 election ballot. And the last page is just an email, as Mr. Clark said again, correct on the date. And the last page is just an email, as Mr. Clark said again, correct on the date, April the 20th. Mr. Clark, seldom wrong on dates. Yeah. So April the 20th is her email to the county and to the township clerk requesting those dates, or that it be placed on the November ballot. So again, returning to the front page of the council action request, and I've already stated it, but staff's recommendation is approval of Resolution 2022-025 authorizing the Police, Fire, Public Safety Operations Special Assessment Ballot proposed be placed on the August 2nd 2022 primary election ballot.
I'll make a motion that we put this to a vote, will it be?
I got a question to carry up this.
Well, we got a, we got a motion that's been made here.
Yeah, I'll pass it.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead.
If this fails, would we have time to place it on November ballot and get out and educate people?
You would. I think that there's some danger in that.
There's no double jeopardy or anything?
There is no double jeopardy for sure, but I think it just promotes more confusion in the, in the community. I mean, again, my recommendation would be to let this carry. I mean, you know what, it's not our preference, but I think it creates the least amount of confusion that's there. So, and there's no question that the millage is needed if the village wants to maintain their own services. If the village doesn't want to maintain their own services, then, you know, that is something that will have to be addressed in the future.
Mr. President, I'd like to piggyback off of what Mr. Perkins said a little bit here. First of all, I am very much in support of this, of the millage itself. I think that's what's necessary, I think it's wise. Here's my concern about retroactively moving the date from November back to August. This, this error, wherever it happened, however it happened, has pretty effectively and easily subverted the will of this council. Because we voted unanimously in February to not only put this to a vote of our residents, but also to put it on the November ballot so that we could take the time and put in the effort to inform our residents on what it is exactly that we're asking them to vote for. You know, now, I have no doubt in my mind that this time it was an honest mistake, right? There's nothing malicious going on here. What about the next time? What's the next snafu that we're going to have to be called into a special meeting of council for? And say, you know, we knew what we, the elected representatives of the people of Holly wanted to do, but, you know, because of some error, somehow, at some level, you know, we are almost forced to change our minds, you know? And it also, it robs our residents of the opportunity to be informed, as informed as possible, about this measure, about what we're being asked to vote for. So, you know, I, I don't want to point fingers, I don't want to blame anybody for this mistake. You know, as Ms. Watts quite rightly pointed out, we are all human, we all make mistakes. These things will happen, there's no doubt about that. However, I am also concerned with the shifting of blame and not taking responsibility, which only further corrodes our residents' trust in their local government. How hard is it for us to say? You know, we are all in some measure, you know, in different ways, and, and, you know, not all of us equally, but we are all in some measure responsible for ensuring that what we vote on is followed through on. And I would just like to take the opportunity to say to our residents that insofar as this ballot language was available, I believe as far back as the beginning of June on the county clerk's website, it was available for any of us to review. I should have done that, you know, and I take that portion of my responsibility for that. And anyone else on council or staff who would wish to follow me on that, I would invite you to do so. Because I think that would go a long ways to repairing the, the trust of the public that we have lost that much more, this much more with this error.
Thank you. Comment, is there a motion? Cheryl, we had to have a motion first. We had to finish our discussion.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Yeah, well, could you clarify, if you would, please, Rick, your motion?
That we accept this, the August 2nd election, is that's what we're voting on? Yes or no for the August 2nd election, am I correct?
I think that's right. There's a motion. Next order of business would be support.
Support.
There's motion and support. Counsel discussion, further counsel discussion. The proposal is to proceed with, you know, to lay the foundation here that we, that all documentation is that we quite correctly prepared and documented it to the county to have this on the ballot in November. Now, it's, it's, it's on the August ballot. And so the motion is to proceed, to redo the resolution that we sent out earlier and to proceed with it to be voted on as it's been printed by the county on next Tuesday's election. So now that we're clear on what we're doing. What's the pleasure of council with the motion and support before the council?
Wait, before you vote?
Well, wait, wait, I'm asking for their, just their opinion right now. I'm not asking for the vote, just their opinion.
Well, I've just seen it go down the other way, so I'm not sure.
I beg your pardon?
I said, I've seen it gone down the other way.
No, no, we're going to have public comment, we're going to have public comment. You're first in line.
I agree with Mr. Kalani, but I also know that we're in between a rock and a hard place. And it, it has to go forward.
I have a question for whoever is able to answer. If the responsibility, as has been suggested, for this mistake lies 100% with the county, why are we having an emergency meeting tonight instead, instead of someone at the county to fix this issue?
Yeah, well, I agree with that, but as Mr. Walker stated, all of those absentee ballots are already in people's hands. And I don't know how many we get. Do you have any idea, George, how many absentee ballots go out?
Well, township by, a couple thousand. But there's only two precincts that are village, and I don't know what the numbers are based on precincts.
Okay. It's our, it's our proposal.
Right.
We own it.
We have to change it.
The county can't do anything.
There's no have to. There's no have to. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but, you know, the suggestion was made that we...
We're the only ones who can act on this resolution.
Yes.
The county can do it. So that's, we can talk about whose fault it is, but it's our resolution. And we can either go forward with the motion and support and vote after public comment.
But, you know, but, but, I'm very sorry, Mr. President. You say, you know, this is our ballot measure, we own it. Apparently we don't, because the date was changed for us.
That's our argument, as a matter of, it's ours. We're the only ones that can, that can proceed on this basis. That's what we did back in, earlier in the year. We're the only ones that can correct it. We can look to blame somebody else.
It's not about blame.
Well, then I, I'm not understanding, I'm not understanding what you're saying. What are we going to do tonight?
I say, I say stick to what we promised the voters. We promised our voters a vote on this measure in November. And, you know, that we would inform and educate our residents.
That was our plan. That wasn't a promise, that was our plan. Okay, and the best laid plan.
Which is a promise in a sense, yes.
It was, but...
But somebody else broke the promise for us.
Yeah, we, it's something out of our control, it transpired here. And putting, putting it on the November ballot is, is not what's recommended by the staff. They're recommending that we proceed with the election next week. And I understand the thinking on that, and that's what the motion and support say, but...
I think the issue is that it already is out there. You know, that's, that's, that's the problem.
You can't change it.
If it wasn't published yet, if people didn't have it yet, then we could say, you know, to the county, get it off of there.
Right.
That's too late. So now...
We never had that opportunity.
Right. Now our scenario is, or our situation before us is, how do we utilize or be able to have a, a legal vote that's before the people now? And this resolution is the way to do that. What I do like about the wording in here, at least, it says why. You know, that we had requested it in November and the county placed it on August. So I, I appreciate that that wording is in the resolution itself that explains that. One of my questions I was coming with tonight was, you know, is it possible to then place it on the November ballot, should we need that? At this point, if we don't approve this and our vote, and, and the people approve it, if there are more yeses than no's, then it's invalid.
Right.
Even if there's more no's than there are yeses, it's still invalid.
It's a null, the election's a nullity.
Right. I don't like being in this position.
No, I mean, nobody does.
I mean, it's disrespectful to us and to our community.
We're going to finish our discussion here and open it up. And I'll let my colleagues finish.
My head's about to blow off.
Does anybody want to take 10 minutes break or something? Why don't we just finish our discussion? Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it.
Any further comments before we open it up to public comment?
No, sir.
No.
No.
All right, public comment, anybody have a comment to make? Cheryl Lynn.
My name is Cheryl Lynn Everly, I'm from 314 Hadley Street, and I have this really nice speech all written. So I'm going to ask you for four minutes from the start. Because I have a voicemail here from Lisa Brown, the Oakland County clerk. And she said another option is that the county will take the responsibility. She used a word, it wasn't quite void, but we will say that the August election for that resolution doesn't count. It will throw it away and will run it again in November. Why that's not offered as an option, I don't know. And then there's yet a third option, ABC, that you just say, you know what? This was really ill conceived to begin with. And maybe we should just stand down and not have it on the ballot at all. And now you're going to get my speech. This village is in the worst shape that I've ever seen. I've lived here for 67 years. The streets are a patchwork of patches, the sidewalks are dangerous, the blight is everywhere. Our parks are dilapidated, underused, poorly used. No one wants to work for the DPW or the administrative offices. The Falk Road dump site is still just festering away on our aquifer. And people don't trust you. A year or so ago, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation assessed Holly's for future grants coming our way. And we rated zero in public engagement, and we rated zero in capital planning. And you know what? It's right, we're right here, so I were right here, right now, tonight. And I'm tired of accountants and I'm tired of attorneys telling us what we need to do in this village. I believe if you would allow the citizens of this village to have some input, you would find that they know what they want to spend their money on. This bait and switch public safety millage, I'm sorry. When all you can tell me is out of it, that a few small street projects might get done, that's baloney. And I expect better, and I want better, and you should want better. You're responsible for this. Now maybe this screw up is an opportunity that you should take to pull this whole thing off the table for now. That's my opinion. After all, you did want public involvement. And that's why you, the council, you could have just done this back in February. You have the power, it was in the minutes, I reviewed them, and you said, no, we want public input. Well, let me tell you, you didn't ask for public input. What you got is these people telling you what we need, and you spoon feed it to the residents, and we either tell you yes or no. And that is not public engagement. No way. As for the amount the assessment is going to raise, $378,000 is a spit in the wind. It is not even 20% of today's public safety budget. And in 15 years, when it's still being collected, it's going to be worth even less. I've always been taught, when you ask people for money, you ask them for what you need and you ask bad. Because you ain't going to get a second chance to ask for a good, long time. Now, again, $378,000. In 2015, Row Engineering told this village that it would take $15 million to get our streets in good condition. Again, $378,000, what the heck are you doing? I suggest you just take this right off of this altogether. You go back to the drawing board and you ask the people what they are willing to pay for. It's scary. You have to face lippy, loud ladies like me. But you know what? There are ways to hold professional community engagements. I've been involved in them. I've sat up there in Flint. I've seen 200 people sit in a room, gather around 20 tables, come up with 20 priorities, rank order them, and walk away with one evening knowing what the 20 top things they want to have happen in their community. And nobody cried, nobody whined, nobody shouted. It was all done professionally.
Cheryl Lynn, you're good. Do you have something more?
I would move to, I would move to extend Ms. Everly's time by two minutes.
There's a motion by...
Consulting your constituents, hearing from them is not only good policy, but it will pay off in the end. It will pay off, it'll be better for the community, and it may actually be rewarding for you. People sometimes make connections and collaborations. And when you pull people together, they understand each other and they can better work together.
Cheryl, Cheryl Lynn, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I just want to say one more thing, that if we're spending $1.8 million in two and a half square miles of Holly, I don't see how Springfield can do the same thing. And it needs to be addressed. We need big thinkers and big ideas. And we need to just quit trying to find pennies somewhere.
Thank you, Cheryl Lynn. Any other public comment? Yes, Joanne?
Joanna Barnes, 3393 Harrington Drive.
I don't know a lot of the legalese on all this, but I wonder if the council could almost look at this as a gift. This, I'm serious. This is a free opportunity for you to find out, test the water to what the public thinks, and then you get to educate them afterwards. If it fails, you have the opportunity then to go out and change the public's mind, and then put it on the ballot properly. If it fails, when it, through the, through the election as it is, you guys are screwed, and you've had no chance to educate anybody. Half these people don't know what this is about. The only thing that you have that might carry this through is the fact that our police and fire were amazing on our downtown fire. But people are hurting, and when they hear higher taxes, they freak out. Especially when we're paying township taxes, too, people are freaked out. And then there's gonna be expansions. I think that the village should seriously consider what Ms. Everly has put forward here, some of the options that the county has given forward, that we just let this go forward, not do the resolution, see what happens for the August. You're gonna have your answer in a few days. And then you have time to educate people if you really want to put it on the November election. Don't double-charge voters for a measure that may very well fail again. So, that's my public comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Love?
Can I ask a question in the middle of that, then? Based on something she brought up?
Certainly.
What does it cost us to put it on another ballot?
It does not cost us.
Okay. So, we do not have a fee? That's, that was one of my questions, was if there was a cost to relist it, and there was not.
Somehow, the taxpayer can, whether it's local, county, state, whatever, elections are free, right?
There's already an election happening.
Right.
And so, we don't-
Joanna, 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 thank you. I understand, I understand. I, I understand, thank you, thank you. Anything further, Richard?
That's good, thank you. I think John was next.
I beg your pardon? Oh, Mr. Love?
John Love, again, 200, John Love, 200 North Saginaw. What happens if a candidate dies? Oh, well, we're gonna count his votes and put him in office? Doesn't work that way. In this day and age, we have like computers. Oh, all you have to do is say, "We're not counting any of those votes," period. And that's the end of it. It isn't, they've already voted? No, they haven't already voted. They got their forms. They don't vote until they put it in the machine, and the machine looks at it. All they have to do is push a little button, you know, like Trump, you know, push the button and take care of it. And that would solve the problem. So, you don't have to correct this by saying, "Well, an illegitimate placement of the issue is okay." And I appreciate what you said, because that's the right way of looking at it. It doesn't, the election isn't over, the election hasn't been held. It's on a ballot, and you don't have to count the votes. Then you don't have to argue about, "Well, this, and that, and that." It's all over, and that's what you need to do. You made the decision, November, that's it. And just tell the clerk, she's kind of, she didn't fill a full deck down there, because that's all she'd have to say to you, is, "Look, we just won't count them. Nobody has voted." The vote takes place on that day, and the machine generates the vote. So, you just tell the machine, "Skip that square," and that's the end of it. You don't have to play this other game. I appreciate what you said. So, anyway, that's the way to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Mr. Clark?
Jim Clark, 314 Hadley Street. Cheryl Lynn has a taped message from the county clerk that clarifies where you stand. Right now, the county has your resolution, putting it on the November ballot. If you do nothing today, that's what's gonna happen. It's gonna be on the November ballot. If you pass this resolution, you legitimize the error that was made for the August ballot. Third option is to contact the county and tell them you don't want it on the ballot at all this year. That's A, B, C, as far as I'm concerned, and people are gonna get confused, certainly. I've already turned in my ballot, and I voted on that issue, and I expect that to be counted or discounted, depending on your actions here tonight. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Yes, ma'am.
Reagan Rockwell, 836 Holly Bush Drive. I want to really thank Mr. Perkins and Mr. Deal for opening up the discussion tonight. It's people like you that give me more faith in, in humans that I see every day, because I probably see, I see the probably bottom 5%, the families that are really struggling in this community every day. So, thank you so much for your integrity, Richard. I know you spoke up as well. But I believe in avoiding the look of not having integrity at all costs. So, we want to avoid impropriety, right? So, thank you for standing up, because what everybody said here tonight really, really is true. There is a distrust in this community, and you guys, thank you so much for carrying the heavy burden that you carry, but you guys represent us, so you have to research things yourself. You can't just take what the village manager is bringing you. You need to be talking to us, and you need to look, because look where we got tonight. We weren't told by the village manager, and I hate to say this, Jerry, but I'm really pissed off right now. And you know I have a working relationship with you, but I've reached out to you on our water back in December and did not hear from you, and we're not seeing our kids in this community supported. I also know for a fact that this Falk Road dump, Jerry tried to give it to Parks and Rec for the kids to play soccer on, and I'm just gonna say that right there, because that's what I've been told, and that's what I believe. So, where is, I'm not seeing the support from council for youth assistance, so I'm gonna put it out there that we need to start caring about our kids in this community, too. And that's why our community doesn't trust. We can't trust when we bring friends on board. I'm just gonna say it, because I don't care if they move me to another location in Oakland County. And that's why I'm upset. I was born in Flint 44 years ago. I worked in Flint for 18 years. I'm still trying to shake the ghetto off me. So, bring it. I'm not having it anymore. This community needs to change. We need you guys to represent us, and I thank you for the change that I'm seeing here tonight. I do want to ask, because I spent 45 minutes with a fire chief from another municipality on the phone tonight, getting schooled on this. I do believe we need this. We need public service, but we don't, where is the balance, and where is it changing at? Are we seeing increases in pay, which I'm hearing that we are? I'm seeing, I'm hearing that we're seeing changes in job descriptions to take out the fact that we used to require that somebody had a college education, now they only have a high school education. So, yes, I know a little bit too much in this community that I don't want to know. I want things done honestly. I want the best candidate for the position selected. When I worked, worked in Flint Community School, I had to interview six times, because I wasn't right color. I am now adopted in Flint, because people know that I will stand up for what's right, and I'm not gonna back down, I don't care what I'm gonna have to deal with. But I do want to know where the budget is imbalanced, and what we are going to do to fix this budget, because it needs to be fixed, and I believe we can possibly do it without a pay increase. On the other hand, the fire chief that I spoke with knows that Mr. McGee is an upstanding guy, he's very frugal, he's going to do what he needs to do, and I don't think he's going to request more than he needs to request. So, I believe, again, that McGee is upstanding, but I want to know where the budget is wrong, and I want to see what we can do to fix it. So, please, I'm watching, I'm watching body actions, and I will say, there's, there's actions from a couple members up here that I haven't liked. When somebody speaks, thank you so much for your wonderful speech. I hate having to go after you. I don't like speaking, so if I come off a little bit rough and abrasive, I know it's lit. I was emancipated minor. I've been on my own since I was 16. I was a taxpaying citizen since I was 16. So, I think that's all I've got, all I've got to say. I want to make sure there's nothing else. My apologies, because I do get anxious when I speak. At the same time, I've had it. I've had it with things changing. I can tell you, when I first moved here, probably about 12 years ago, the police department rolled up two cars to my house, my husband was out working in the yard, he thought something had happened to me, but they gave him a welcome packet. I've seen things change in the community, and I'd like to go back to seeing that PR. It's wonderful what the police department is doing with, with the pantry. So, I see them doing some wonderful things, but I want to see some other things in policing go back.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hello, Keith Barnes, 3393 Harrington Drive. Just want to let you know, I do support the police and fire. I worked under Chief Schumeyer, as well as Chief McGee, for a number of years, and I, I've worked with outdated equipment. I know what it takes and what it costs to handle all that stuff. I'm also for moving this to November, but I wanted to ask Mr. Walker, you had mentioned that we didn't want it on this August 2nd ballot for a number of reasons. I'm just curious if you're at liberty to educate me and the community what those reasons were.
Well, the largest reason was because there was no opportunity to provide the education or the contact with both chiefs as to what the rationale was behind the village. And the other one was because in November, that's when the largest amount of voters usually turn out. And so, I mean, that, those were the reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Any further public comment? We gotta get to lay of the land here. Mr. Walker, if we were to adopt the proposed resolution, then we get, we breathe life into Tuesday's election, and that becomes the vote up or down on the fire village, right?
The police-fire village, yes.
Police-fire village, I'm sorry, thank you. And if we take no action, or if the motion fails, then it's back on the, it gets on the November, quite properly and correctly, finally, it gets on the November ballot.
Yes.
Okay, that's pretty clear. And we did have a meeting last week in preparation for the groundwork for the campaign, if you will, for the, for the village.
Yes.
Counsel, we have a motion and support. And any further discussion? Kirk Bigger, the motion is to essentially change the date to, retroactively, try to change the date to Tuesday's election, right?
To amend the date on the resolution to Tuesday's election.
And if the, if the motion passes, then Tuesday's vote is wired, valid? And if the motion fails, we move on, as the original resolution said, to November?
Correct.
Okay. There should be no questions about the vote. Any questions, counsel, about this?
No.
Any, any comments? Buster, any comments, Paul? Roll call vote.
Galaney?
No.
Kineman?
No.
Powers?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Musgrave?
No.
Weinreiner?
No.
McKenna?
No. Motion failed. Anything further for tonight's meeting? I'm gonna be having some meetings, I think, with Mr. Narch, with Chief Narch, and Chief McGee, and-
Can I ask a question? We haven't adjourned yet.
No, we haven't.
A question about, are there any, I don't know, responses or something that we do to the county? You know, other than telling them we said, "We're gonna stick with what we decided." I mean, you know, is there anything that we can do, other than making a statement that says, "We didn't like what you did"?
No, I mean, I spelled it out in the resolution that we didn't. I spoke with two or three people in elections on Friday, and they said it was-
As in, there's no legal repercussions, is what I'm, you know?
Yeah, it was a mistake, and I, I don't know what repercussions there could possibly be.
Well, ditto Cheryl Lynn. I talked to Lisa the other day, and she told me exactly what she told me.
You and Cheryl Lynn can talk after the meeting, because I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Anything further, counsel, before we adjourn our meeting?
No.
Nothing further for the good of the order? The meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.